Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge that Chris Campbell is our attorney for the evening. We also have Ms. Plemons, one of our board members who is joining us via phone, and Ms. Churchill is absent tonight. She's out of town. Per policy 2302, remote participation in board meetings, all votes this evening will be roll call votes. At this time, I would ask the presentation of the colors and pledge of allegiance for TC Robertson. The instructor is Master Sergeant Michael McCree. Would you please stand?
Forward, march! Forward, march! Left, face!
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, face! Forward, march!
I ask that you remain standing this evening for a moment of silence and ask that you focus your thoughts on our first responders that have been challenged in Charlotte. Thank you. You may be seated. I'd like to get a motion to approve the agenda. Could I get a motion, please? And a second?
A second.
And that would be Kim Plemons. Would you respond, Ms. Plemons, please?
Yes, I approve.
Thank you. Peggy Buchanan?
I approve.
Rob Elliott?
Approved.
Amanda Simpkins?
Aye.
And Judy Lewis. Thank you. At this time, I'll recognize our superintendent for comments.
Good evening, parents, members of the community, board members, and teammates. Welcome to the month of May and the final 26 days of school. This is the season where we have many opportunities to celebrate our students' academic, artistic, and athletic accomplishments this year. During the same time, our students and faculty are hard at work maximizing every available instructional moment to ensure our students get the very most out of this year possible. I'm so very proud of the work ethic I see in our classrooms across the school system. I remain convinced that we are in the midst of our finest year ever. High school musical season continues this weekend with Alice by Heart at Inca High School and Mamma Mia at Owen High School next weekend. The dates and times for all these shows are available on the arts calendar on our system website. I will pause to say, we've got a couple members of some of the musicals I've watched this year who are here for other recognitions, and I have been blown away by the musicals I've experienced across our school system and so very proud of all of our students and the teachers who instruct them. Next Tuesday night, May 7th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., is our annual family night at the Asheville Mall for the opening of our high school All County Visual Arts Show. I can't wait to celebrate our amazing artists. I'm so very appreciative of the priority Buncombe County Schools places on the arts and the opportunities given to our students to share and grow their talents. During the month of March, the state anonymously surveyed teachers and certified staff in all 115 school systems using the North Carolina Teacher Working Condition Survey. I could not be more proud of our response rate of 95.73%, our highest response rate in the history of the survey. We have received the results and will be using the feedback from our teachers and certified staff to guide our efforts and to continue our commitment to continuous improvement. An immediate takeaway and a point of pride is 91.25% of our teachers stating that overall my school is a good place to work and learn. This is higher than the state average. As you know, we are committed to reaching greater heights. This survey demonstrates that we're absolutely on the right pathway. The overall satisfaction score of 91.25% is 11 percentage points higher than the overall satisfaction score in 2022 of 80.14% and 5.6 percentage points higher than the overall satisfaction score prior to the pandemic in 2020. We look forward to continuing to address those issues the teachers have mentioned and continuing to grow in all areas. During the board's last work session on the budget, I stated that you can tell what a person or organization values through two documents, their calendar and their checkbook. Where we spend our time and how we spend the financial resources entrusted to us definitively illustrate our values and who Buncombe County Schools is and aspires to be. I'm proud of all the work that has gone into the local budget request the board will consider tonight and appreciate all of the many people who've been involved in creating it. I'm also very proud of the new BCS strategic plan the board will consider as well. In both cases, we have had many, many people involved in sharing their feedback and ideas. Thousands of survey responses and dozens and dozens of conversations in our 13 community town halls and school staff meetings in every school have been distilled into these two documents that will guide our work in the coming years. I do want to publicly thank Representative Lindsey Prather, who has introduced legislation in the General Assembly to reimburse our school system for the tremendous expense of creating the new electoral districts required by the state. I also want to thank Representative Eric Agar, who has co-sponsored this legislation. Tonight's legislative agenda includes our request that this bill be approved so the funding that went into redistricting electoral lines might be used to support our students and staff. We know that we still have much work to do and that we can and must continue to improve. We will give our all because our students are worthy of our very best efforts. I just want you to know that I could not be prouder of all I continue to experience in our classrooms and schools. To our team and to our board members, thank you for all that you do, for our students, our families, our teachers and staff, for the Buncombe County School system. Madam Chair, this concludes my comments.
Thank you. This time, I'll recognize Ken Almer for good news.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Jackson, and BCS teammates and families. A lot of good news to share with you tonight. We are going to start with a group of students here who will spend time this summer doing some deep dives into their chosen subjects. Could be math, science, music, art, Spanish, little of everything. Through a rigorous local and state selection process, we have 21 juniors from Buncombe County Schools from across all BCS high schools who've been selected to attend North Carolina Governor's School, and they are going to spend a whole month this summer living and learning on a college campus, either Greensboro College or Meredith College. The residential program integrates academic disciplines, the arts, and some pretty other unique courses. We have got several of those students who are going to be attending Governor's School here to honor tonight. Dr. Reed is going to help me hand out their certificates, and we'll begin. We'll bring you down by school, and we'll start with A.C. Reynolds. Mr. Elliott, if you and Mr. Alexander will join Dr. Jackson and Dr. Reed. Seiya Elum in social sciences and Ava Ramsberger in theater. Congratulations. There were more BCS candidates accepted for the arts this year than any previous year. Congratulations to you. Mr. Cody, if you will come down from Irwin High School, we would like to honor part of the Governor's School class of 2024, Freya McCormick in visual arts. Congratulations. Ms. Lewis, if you and Mr. Broleson would come forward, we would like to honor Sawyer Menzer from Inca High School, who'll be attending North Carolina Governor's School class of 2024 in mathematics. Congratulations, Sawyer. Congratulations, Sawyer. And Madam Chair, if you and Ms. Hannah would come down, we have three students from North Buncombe High School who'll be going to Governor's School. Elizabeth Stowe in mathematics, Derek Gilliland in mathematics, and Anderson Bowman for theater from North Buncombe High School. Congratulations to our North Buncombe students. And attending North Carolina Governor's School from TC Robertson High School, Harry Ferguson. Harry Ferguson attending Governor's School for theater. Congratulations to you. Now, I should let you know that we were very lucky to get this group of students in this room tonight because y'all are so very busy. There were also several other Governor's Schools. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. If you will follow Michaela out, all the Governor's School students, and yes, we're going to get a picture of the group outside. But there was so many of these students have so many other commitments. There were also Governor's School students from Owen, Nesbit Discovery Academy, and Early College who could not be with us tonight, but we sure are proud of all 21 Buncombe County School students accepted into the 2024 North Carolina Governor's School. Now, you heard Dr. Jackson talk about the musicals. This is musical season on stages all across Buncombe County Schools. Music is in the air, and tonight, we are going to honor one of the music educators who helps students make the most of their voices. Alyssa Baker is in her 28th year as choral director of TC Robertson High School. She's also helping her peers all across the state hone the talents of their students. She was selected to serve as the High School Chorus Section Chair of the North Carolina Music Educators Association. That is a leadership position that Ms. Baker will continue to hold through the year 2026. If Ms. Baker will come forward, along with Buncombe County Schools Arts Education Specialist Laura Mitchell, we would like to recognize you for your service to our schools, our students, and students and schools all across North Carolina. Congratulations. Congratulations, Ms. Baker. And one more great story to share with you here tonight, the work of Janet Roberts, BCS Exceptional Children Administrator and Curriculum Director. Her outstanding work with our students in Buncombe County is being recognized all across the state of North Carolina. She's being honored with the Lighthouse Award by the State Council for Exceptional Children and North Carolina Division of Career Development. Ms. Roberts, if you would come forward with our Director of Special Services, Dr. Mindy Connor. Ms. Roberts is dedicated to helping students transition from school life to career life and adult life, and to quote one of her job coaches, "We truly could not do our job without her knowledge, support, and guidance, and we are so proud of all that she does for students." Congratulations, Janet Roberts. And we invite you to keep up with all the good news happening all across Buncombe County Schools at buncomeschools.org and follow Buncombe County Schools on social media. Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Almer. At this time, I would recognize Dr. Jennifer Reed to discuss with us our strategic plan for 2024 to 2027.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Dr. Jackson, and members of the board. While my slides load, I will just tell you that I am so excited to be presenting to you our strategic plan for the years 2024 through 2027. I'm going to assume you can see. There we go. As you well know, we have spent really about a year and a half developing the strategic plan. And before I get into the details of the plan, I just would like to say thank you. Many folks in this room, certainly including our dedicated school board members, parents, families, students, teachers, staff, community organizations, and business and industry partners have been part of this important strategic plan journey. And I just want to take a moment to thank everyone for their time and their dedication to the process. Since the arrival of Dr. Jackson in November of 2022, about a year and a half ago, our school system has engaged our community in a total of 13 town hall meetings. We embarked on that journey soon after Dr. Jackson's arrival and ended that journey not long ago, just this past March. We visited all of our six districts twice, and in that first year, held a virtual session where we gathered input from our stakeholders. In addition to that, to gather further input on our plan, we engaged with our Teacher Advisory Council multiple times, our Student Advisory Council, representing all of our high schools in our system, our principals, assistant principals, and a special visit with Unate North Carolina to ensure that we gathered feedback from our multilingual learners and their families. From all of those sessions and the massive amount of amazing, authentic input we received, we have worked with all these stakeholders to filter through that, to put it together, to wordsmith into something that tonight, I'm excited to present to you as what I feel to be a very authentic voice from all of the stakeholders I mentioned. As a system, I am really excited that we will continue to elevate to greater heights through the implementation of the strategic plan. As you know, a great strategic plan begins with a strong vision. The vision determines where we're going. The mission determines how we're going to get there. The vision of Buncombe County Schools going into the future is that every one of our students in Buncombe County Schools will graduate on time, prepared to pursue their chosen path as critical thinkers and collaborative leaders in our diverse society. That's a big, big vision, and as a system, we are dedicated to the mission in order to achieve that vision. And in doing so, we will foster a culture of excellence and continuous improvement where every student will thrive and will learn from the exceptional educators that we have in our school system. I think in this plan that I'm sharing with you, one of my most, the most exciting parts to me, and I think where the essence of all of this input really speaks and the spirit of the input speaks is through our core values. Core values really set the lens for us to then implement the mission through our goals and strategies. And so, I'm going to take the time to read these out loud. I think they're very powerful. As a school system, we are at our best when we engage students in meaningful ways. Our Student Advisory Council, loud and clear, said, "This is how we need to be engaged in learning." We are at our best when we collaborate and we connect. We are at our best when we build strong family and community partnerships. This is big work that we do, and we're not in it alone. We are at our best when we support our educators. One of the themes that came through from all of our sessions, especially our town hall sessions, is how important it is for our educators to have the professional learning and the support that they need to meet the changing needs of our students. And last, but certainly not least, is investing. Investing all of our resources, not just monetary, but our human resources, all that we have to give for equity and continued excellence in our system. There are a lot of words on this page, so I'm not going to read them all, but every great strategic plan has to have some amazing goals. In our strategic plan that I'm presenting tonight, we have a total of four goals. Each of them has a bit of a different focus and flavor. Goal number one is about our schools meeting and exceeding growth and increasing proficiency. That part can sound just a little bit jargony sometimes, and as a school system, we are measured by state assessments. But the other added piece to goal one is that we're looking at multiple indicators to determine success of our students. That's really a shift from our former plan to this plan. It's that, yes, those state results are important, but there are other pieces of a student's success and growth that we can measure. Goal number two, it's big. It's about establishing classrooms. can measure. Goal number two, it's big. It's about establishing classrooms, schools, and a district culture that is welcoming, responsive, safe, and engaging, not only for students, but for our staff and our families. Goal three is preparing every student for success in life by engaging them in the application of what we call durable skills. And I'll go into a little bit more detail about what those skills are in just a minute. And then goal four, this is the goal and the strand where we show our dedication to our support for our teachers and all of our staff throughout our system. As I mentioned earlier in goal three, we're focused on the North Carolina Portrait of a Graduate Skills. The new term for those skills has become durable skills, skills that transcend whatever a student decides to do after graduation. And I think that you've heard several of those words already mentioned through our core values and our mission and our vision. These words resonated with everyone we met with, and it was really hard for us to boil those down and spread them out enough in our plan where we didn't have to list all of those. They were important enough for our goal: adaptability, communication, critical thinking, learner's mindset, responsibility, collaboration, and empathy. Every one of our goals so far has been built out with three or four strategies. I won't read each of those to you, but goal one was the goal around students meeting or exceeding growth and increasing in proficiency in all of our subgroups measured by multiple indicators. If you look at Strategy 1.3, I'm excited to say that Buncombe County Schools is committed to the idea of public teaching. That is not a new idea, but it's new in our strategic plan, and it's one that we've been very intentional about in our system, where teachers go visit other teachers. We learn from each other. Our district staff are in classrooms as collaborative partners in the work. Goal number two is establishing this culture throughout our system, all the way into our classrooms, that's welcoming, responsive, safe, and engaging. We'll do that in many ways, but I do want to point out Strategy 2.2. When we met with Unate, it became loud and clear that we needed to be even more intentional on reaching the families that whose native language might not be English. And so very specifically, one of the strategies in our plan is that we'll be thoughtful about listening and engaging with families, but also in our communication methods with families. Goal number three is the goal about durable skills, this Portrait of a Graduate goal. And generally, as staff throughout our system, it's our job to learn those skills, to model those skills, to include them in lesson plans, and to own this not just in ninth through 12th grade, but kindergarten through grade 13. Because we know graduation, the graduation journey doesn't begin at high school. It begins the moment a student enters our school system. And then goal four, finally, and certainly one of the most important, is supporting our staff members, making sure that we have differentiated options for professional learning. As a former teacher myself, I know just how important that is. And that was so important to our teachers that that became a strategy in our plan. In closing, I would like to tell you that we're committed to making this plan actionable. We're committed to continually bringing it to life through that spirit of continuous improvement. We will first start by connecting this plan at the departmental level at our central services and engaging all of our directors in conversations and planning around aligning the goals and the strategy to specific action steps in their department that are measurable, and we meet regularly to make sure that we are, we're moving forward. In addition to that, we'll be meeting this summer with all of our school improvement teams at each of our 45 schools and doing the same alignment work where we take the goals and the strategies and align those to school improvement plans across our system. At the end of the day, I really feel strongly that this plan will continue to elevate us to the greater heights. Thank you again for allowing me to present this to you, and I am open for any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. This is amazing work. It's taken a long time, and we appreciate what you and all of our administrative staff have done to bring this to fruition. Do we have questions or comments from board members?
To encapsulate everything that was shared at those town hall meetings, it's incredible the way that you've been able to present that in a way that's clear and seems manageable, too, and something to be excited about and look forward to. So thank you so much for your efforts in that way.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to share a compliment, too, on that. And, you know, Dr. Jackson's introduced this Trust and Inspire model for us as a school system to strive toward. And, you know, a big part of that is around true collaboration. And in true collaboration, sometimes you hear things that are challenging, and you have to be willing to just, you know, respond to those challenging, you know, collaborative moments in a constructive way. And as I attended those public meetings, you know, I encountered some of that, but also encountered you and certainly your staff, you know, welcoming those, that type of feedback. And I think that that's really important, that you did seek some community feedback, you know, from outside of our school system, not just, you know, parents and teachers and students and administrators, but also throughout the community, because there's some pretty key input there. And just one slight question, that was just, and some other strategic plans that I was looking through, they had talked about metrics and how they plan to sort of ensure that as we go forward with the strategic plan that that we're living up to it. And I think I just heard you say, like, the real key goal is in this alignment that you're planning to do this summer, the components of the strategic plan are going to make them way, make their way into the school improvement plan. So those committees in the schools will really be working with this to actually get it out in the ground. Is that the, and that's really where the metrics are going to live, right? I guess.
It is. Certainly, we'll have metrics at the district level, but also at school level. We refer to those measurable pieces as performance indicators. And so that will be that next step of building out our plan into action steps and then clear, you know, database goals of measuring our progress.
Yeah, fantastic work. That's really good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. At this time, I'll recognize, recognize Tim for public comment.
Good evening, Madam Chair. There are 18 public comments tonight, and I would-
Just a second, Mr. Reeves. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Appreciate that very much. Ladies and gentlemen, it's now time for public comment. As a reminder, speakers will be called in the order in which they have signed up. All speakers will have precisely three minutes to speak unless adhered to the guidelines set forth in Buncombe County Policy 2310, Public Participation, including all reasonable rules established by the superintendent. Profane language, making threats, or revealing confidential student or staff information is not allowed in public comment. Please address the board as a whole, and please note that board members will not be able to respond directly to your public comment. The board welcomes and appreciates everyone here tonight for public comment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reeves.
Thank you. When you reach the podium, please state your name and the district in which you live. The first speaker is Alyssa Pedersen.
Hello, board members. Hello, Dr. Jackson. Hello, community, people who are here and people who are online. My name is Alyssa Pedersen. I am a public school teacher. I work in the Irwin District. I have been teaching in that district for almost 13 years, and I am also the outgoing Vice President of the BCAE. So last year, Governor Cooper said that in North Carolina, we are in a state of emergency for our public education, even though it is in our constitution, our state constitution of a sound and basic education, and we have Leandro on our side saying that they should support our schools. We still are in a state of emergency because of the dismal pay that we are receiving. There's no financial incentive to get your master's pay. You get no extra money if you put that time in and get that expertise. You don't get health care upon retirement for new hires. They are underfunding our public schools at Raleigh level. They're saying that, and then they're saying that we're failing. They're giving tax cuts to the rich with tax-funded vouchers for private schools, for anybody. You could be a millionaire. There's culture wars in the classroom where they're actually calling people, leaders at our state level are calling teachers groomers and saying we're indoctrinating students. It's no wonder why teachers are leaving the profession in North Carolina in record numbers. So teacher pay in this state is primarily responsible. From Raleigh, we're ranked 36th in the nation for teacher pay. And if you look at starting teachers, we're ranked 46th out of 50. You get a whopping $100 every year from year, experience year three until 15. You get $100 more dollars, $10 a paycheck for a 10-month paycheck. And then from year 15 to 24, you get no increase in pay, nothing, for 10 years. And then you get another whopping $200 pay increase if you work for more than 25 years in the public schools. And we are, like Dr. Jackson said, lucky to have our local reps, Lindsay Prather and Eric Ager. Lindsay Prather, being a former teacher advocating for us on the state level, but we also have people, someone running for the state public instruction who has never been a teacher, never had her students in public schools, and yet she wants to run public schools in North Carolina. We have someone, I see a sign for someone running for governor who has called teachers groomers and say, "We're indoctrinating our children." They have said that to get kids to get in line, we need to beat them in a circle. It's absolutely crazy. They have taken the cap off of how much you can get, you can make, and still send your kids to private school. If you can afford Asheville Day School, which is $42,535, you should not get almost $3,500 from the state taxpayers, but they want to give them more money.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Erin Burns.
That's a tough act to follow. Hi, board. My name is Erin Burns, and I have a child that's at Glen Arden Elementary School, and I also teach at AC Reynolds Middle School under the direction of Stanley Wielis, Lindsay Rice, and Ms. Lauren Kelleher, who do an amazing job. So I want to tell you a little bit about one of the jobs that's on the chopping block, my job. I've been an academic interventionist using COVID funds for the past two years, and I just want to tell you what that job means, because the title itself is a little misleading. After COVID, we all recognized that our children were suffering, that they had learning losses. Some of them were at home, full-time. Some of them were learning from computers. All of them came with different learning that had taken place during that year and a half. And it's been my job at Reynolds Middle School to help identify those students who have learning losses and identify them. I use data to identify them. And I know data is very important to you all. I use data to identify them, and then I measure my progress with them, also using data. So I have data to show you that every single child that I've worked with in the past two years has shown growth, every single one. But my job is on the chopping block. So if our intention, our goal number one, is to increase our student performance on standardized tests and other limited measures of their potential and their abilities, then we should not consider cutting the very positions that are designed to uplift our students who do not have all the advantages and don't come from supportive parents necessarily. I work with students throughout the year in individual and small group capacities on literacy support. I've told you that every single student I worked with showed growth. My school proudly boasts 5% of growth in every language level. I could not possibly claim all that responsibility myself, but I was an integral part of our team that made those changes. And when I am gone, there is no one to fill my shoes. Our teachers are burdened. The teachers in this room that I work with will raise their hand and tell you that I alleviate their burdens regularly. I come in and help when they need help. I pull out students who need special support. I am an invaluable member of the team, and this may be my last year in our school system because this position is on the chopping block. So I'm hoping that I've shared enough with you to inspire you to investigate a little bit more deeply about how some of these data-driven positions that are showing results, that we need more-
Thank you, ma'am.
Amanda Brinkman.
Good evening, board. This is my first meeting I've attended. I'm a little nervous. I am here in support of the wonderful group BCAE and all of the work that they've done to try and improve and, from what I've seen tonight, implement the goals and strategies of the next couple of years. I have a child in the Owen School District, too. Actually, my daughter is a junior this year at Owen High. In my experience there, over the past three years, each year she has lost one to probably more teachers that were amazing and helped her in many different ways. And when I asked her, "Why, why are your teachers leaving? Why did that particular teacher leave?" And she says, "They're burned out. They have too much on their plates. They are in charge of maintaining order in their classroom, and they just don't have nearly the support from guidance staff to many other positions, including custodial." She told me just the other day, they had to borrow a custodian from another district because they didn't have maybe money in the budget to pay them wages that make it possible to make a living while working in the school and supporting all of the much-needed services they provide. So I'm here to ask you to please consider what these teachers and staff members have proposed and ask the commissioners for more money for our schools. We desperately need it. I don't know how we will continue for much longer with the skeleton crew we have, and we're losing more amazing teachers this year. And I don't know what will happen next year, and we're losing classes that are important for building upon the vision you have for kids graduating with the needed skills to make it in this world. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Shannon Heather O'Brien-Wall. Just a reminder, please state your name and the district in which you live.
Hey, can you hear me? Okay. I'm Shannon Heather O'Brien-Wall. I'm coming from the Owen District. I have a daughter. She is EC, that's Exceptional Children, which I call special needs. And I'm just going to tell you exactly what her two biggest complaints are, and I hear them a lot. Number one, they have chicken sandwiches every single day at the school, and they've got to change that. Number two, there's just not enough assistance. And especially in her area, they really need to have assistance. It's a tough job. I get that. And they need to, in order to maintain those assistance, they need to pay them a living wage. Thank you.
Next speaker is Margaret Hurt.
Good evening. I'm Margaret Hurt. I'm representing the Owen School District. I'm here as a parent, a PTO leader, an Owen tennis coach, an- I'm here as a parent, a PTO leader, an Owen tennis coach, an educator at Black Mountain Primary, and an advisory council member. I am full of gratitude to Buncombe County Schools for the many, many ways it has surrounded my three children with learning, care, and growth since each began kindergarten at Black Mountain Primary. My children have thrived in the school district. I am so appreciative of the ways the teachers and staff have helped shape and guide them and offered to them the skills of every sort that they need. At every part of the educational journey, I see value in writing skills, digging deeper, how to respect authority, learning to work well with peers and others who are different from you, learning to use resources, how to love music, and be a wonderful teammate on sports teams. Buncombe County Schools has helped each of my children realize their potential. I share this next part with you as an example of how important our schools are to me. For almost 17 years, I have poured my time, talents, and resources and energies into supporting, meeting the needs of, and improving our Owen Schools through my PTO leadership. I have benefited in countless ways from relationships I've formed with parents, principals, staff, fellow teachers from all walks of life. The partnership of our schools and PTO has given me a wonderful opportunity to be involved in my children's education and growth. With intentionality, I have helped make our schools stronger and serve teachers and students. Being on the inside has allowed me to see some of the challenges of the teaching profession and the challenges happening inside of our school buildings on a daily basis. In particular, I wish to address the inequalities among high school students around Buncombe County that have affected my family in particular. My son, who is now in college, took the Nursing Fundamentals course, which included the CNA certification. It was one of his favorite things about high school. The teacher and the skills he learned are things he hopes to apply as he gets older. When my daughter was the age to take the same course at Owen two years later, she was so disappointed to learn the course had been dropped, the teacher could no longer teach the course because there was not adequate funding. She... Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Kennard. I am an Owen District parent and also an Owen High School employee. Today, my husband and I had the privilege of cheering on our daughter, an Owen Middle School student at the Special Olympics Spring Games. This day is always a joyful celebration of students with disabilities and the amazing community of folks that support them. My daughter loves the Special Olympics, especially because she gets to reunite with beloved former teachers and support personnel from all her years in school. As always, today, I felt overwhelmed with gratitude for the multitude of teachers, therapists, and assistants who have enriched my child's life. When you're raising a kid with multiple disabilities, it truly takes a village. This village of folks that educate my child deserve to be paid in a way that reflects the importance of their work and their specialized skills. Working in special education is hard, and my child has experienced firsthand the high turnover rate in EC positions. At the Special Olympics today, I was also remembering some former teachers that are no longer BCS employees. My daughter's sixth-grade teacher, who was voted Teacher of the Year at Owen Middle in 2022, left BCS that same year for a teaching position in Haywood County after realizing that a house in Buncombe County was very much out of her price range. A phenomenal West Buncombe Elementary teacher moved to a different state where the pay was significantly better. These were acute losses for my child, and I know there are countless similar stories across the county. The budget is always a big discussion topic at school board meetings. We are all painfully aware that the North Carolina State Legislature's funding of public schools is woefully inadequate. However, it is incumbent on our community to bridge that gap. We must do everything we can to ensure that students like my child have their educational needs met. Buncombe County needs to do all that it can to retain the best, most qualified teachers. We are losing great teachers here because of the discrepancy between the low teaching salary in North Carolina and the high cost of living here in this community. Last year, the school board voted to request an increase in our local supplement from the county commission. Thank you, and we know more money is needed. Please fully fund the requests in the BCAE petition, including the items specific to exceptional children, a 10% increase in EC staff positions, a $2,000 a year additional supplement for EC...
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nicole Washburn, and I live in the Roberson District. I have students that attend school in the Roberson District and at Nesbit Discovery Academy. I do teach science also at Nesbit Discovery Academy, and last year I was the at-large Teacher of the Year for Buncombe County, and I serve on the Buncombe County Teacher Advisory Board as well. I have lived in Asheville for 19 years now and have three children, 20, 17, and my youngest 14 today. All three were educated and are being educated in Buncombe County Public Schools. I'm a teacher, and I'm a parent. If you were looking for a person living in this county more invested in public schools, I'm not sure you could find them. Come with me on a quick trip down memory lane, won't you? My first year of teaching was in 1996, 27 years ago. As a new teacher in my early 20s, I knew what I was signing up for. My salary would not be high, but honestly, that was true for many careers requiring college degrees at that time. My husband made about the same as I did with a business degree. Most professionals, over the span of their working life, however, will increase their income, some more significantly than others, but the expertise they bring to the table is compensated. Almost 30 years later, and I do not make much more than I did then, just a few thousand dollars, yet the cost of living has risen dramatically. Not only does the situation make it difficult to retain excellent teachers, as has been said, but it makes it extremely difficult to attract qualified professional educators to our profession, and it's even harder in Buncombe County as the cost of living is so high. According to Forbes, Asheville is in the top 10 fastest-growing smaller cities, and perhaps even more importantly, it's the seventh-fastest-growing tech hub in the entire country. Asheville's a city that's growing and growing fast, both in population and in job opportunities. I teach biology, and part of what we study is animal behavior. If there's one thing we can say about us humans, we're typically not very good at being proactive, but instead, we wait until there's a problem or a crisis, and then react, often slowly. This is an important moment in time. We must be proactive in this moment and invest in our children's education so they can fill the jobs in Asheville and the ones the state of North Carolina is forecasting. Being reactive means we wait and do nothing until there's a crisis and to a few qualified teachers for our students. Asheville's well-known for being more proactive than reactive. We are a place that is willing to make decisions that help our citizens now and in the future. We've been down memory lane, now let's look at the future. What if Buncombe County improved salaries for educators, investing in the lives and success of students in the county? Because we know that study after study shows that qualified educators in the classroom is the number-one indicator for student success. What if we were the most proactive county in the state in this way, making headlines, allowing qualified educators to stay in the classroom, and attracting new educators, ensuring our students' current and future success? Because they deserve it.
Thank you.
Abby Heslin, or Heslin.
Good evening. My name is Abby Heslin, and this is my 15th year teaching at Irwin High School. My son attends the preschool there, and I'm hoping to enroll him in the dual immersion program at West Buncombe when he reaches kindergarten. And I'm here to ask you to bring the county commissioners a budget that reflects all of our petition asks. I would like to speak specifically to two of these asks. First, we have asked for five additional workdays, free of PD or meetings. We ask that classified staff receive pay for these days as well. These workdays would directly impact student learning and teacher efficacy. The amount of work that gets done in these days is unparalleled, and as the school year goes on, it becomes almost impossible to find uninterrupted time to work on projects or collaborate with others. We often have months without dedicated time to work on our classrooms. For example, this year, there is only one workday during second semester. As someone who teaches three different classes, classes that I didn't teach first semester, having some workdays supplied would be very valuable. It would especially allow me to meet with teachers from other schools that teach my subject. I am not provided with any curriculum, nor resources or assessments for the four levels that I teach. Each year, I typically teach all four levels of Spanish, and I design practically everything that we do, and this is all work that is done on my own time and for free, because my planning periods are used for grading, communicating with parents, making copies, and my other responsible duties. So these additional five days would be very, very impactful for me and for my students. The other ask I want to highlight is the need for more student-facing behavior-support staff and therapists. We need more than we have, not less. Anyone that has been in school recently knows that the students are struggling. They are struggling in so many ways. The main reason that teachers leave the profession, besides low pay, is the behavior of students. And we in education know that most negative behaviors are students asking for something that they are not receiving. They are asking for supports that we are not providing. School feels like a whole different world than it did five years ago. Students need more and different supports now. Classroom teachers cannot just manage the behaviors we are seeing while we continue to teach, but there are simply not enough other adults in the building to meet these student needs. Our EC staff, our counselors, our social workers are insanely overworked and have way too many students on their caseloads. Our students deserve to get just as many supports and opportunities as students in other districts. They are crying out for help, and we are not stepping up. As my colleagues have addressed, we know that the bulk of this problem lies with Raleigh. We are only able to influence what we can influence, and we know that our school board and our county commissioners...
Thank you.
My name is Soren Pedersen. My mom is a teacher at Lester Elementary School. I sent you an email a little earlier today going into the public employee living wage pledge, but I just wanted to, you know, speak on that a little bit more in detail. And I wanted to start by giving a little anecdote, which was the experience of my family members who come from New England and were visiting us last year when you made that budget request to the county commissioners. And, you know, sometimes it's helpful to pull back and get that outside perspective of people who don't live in this community and don't experience what it means to be a teacher here every day. And what my uncle saw, what my grandparents saw, was teachers coming here, talking about their life experiences, explaining what they do every day for themselves, for their children, for their communities. And what they saw was teachers coming and pleading and begging for a 7% increase to their salaries, which didn't even put teachers at a living wage. And I just want to say for a second what a living wage is, because a living wage is not a luxury salary. A living wage is the bare minimum. A living wage is what you need to get to cover your annual expenses so you can live in the communities that you serve. And so when teachers were coming and making that request for a 7% increase to the local supplemental, they weren't saying, "Let me get my second mansion." They were saying, "Let me work here. Let me teach the community that I interact with every single day." And when we do not provide workers with a living wage, what we are saying is, "You employees, how can you afford to be here?" We're saying, we're asking them to subsidize the county. And you might hear, and I appreciate that the Board of Education provided that 7% or made that 7% supplemental increase, but you might think, "That was a big deal." But it's an even bigger deal to the workers who have to figure out what substandards they have to go to to afford to live in the communities. Do they work in another county and commute here every day? Do they suffer the stress and mental and physical health impacts that have been shown to be associated with being provided a sub living wage? And Buncombe County, and I'll say this, Buncombe County is an expensive place to live. And I know the fact is that the state manages a lot of our budget, but even if we solve that at the state level, even if Governor Cooper's recommendation, which included a $7,000 increase to the starting teacher salary, was fully implemented, we still would not be where we need to be at in Buncombe County, because Buncombe County is so much more expensive than the rest of the state. So, you know, in our strategic plan presentation, that was right before the discussion and public comment, we talked about our commitment to our educators. And so I ask you to make that commitment, make the long-term commitment, not just to provide a small increase now, but to commit to the living wage project going forward and allowing our teachers to work and live here at least at a minute.
Thank you.
My name is Sharon Broussard. Thank you, board members, for letting us have the opportunity to speak. I am a grandmother with a preschool-aged grandson. We both live in the Reynolds District, and I am a member of Public School Strong. Public School Strong joins with Governor Cooper and the Buncombe County Association of Educators in believing strong communities are built on strong and fully-funded public schools. It is the duty of the county commission to root the budget in what our children really need. It is up to you and the county staff to figure out how to ensure our community's children get what they need. A large part of this is to pay public school teachers like the professionals that they are. Another important part of strong public education is funding high-tech science labs and libraries and ensuring our students with disabilities get the resources the state constitution guarantees them. We must add staff for student mental health and behavior issues. We ask that all classified and certified EC, which is a special education, staff pay increase by $2,000 a year and increase EC positions by 10% district-wide. All students must have increased access to a school-based therapist who accepts all North Carolina Medicaid plans with the goal of at least one full-time therapist for each school, and hire an additional 13 behavior-support specialists and assistants, growing to at least one full-time school-based behavior specialist at each school. We continue to battle against the Republican-dominated state legislature to achieve the funding our public schools need to make our students thrive. Thank you, Buncombe County School Board, for listening to us, working to fund our public schools with the inadequate funding provided by the state and the county commission, and doing what you can to make our public education system the best it can be.
Hello, my name is Amy D. Erickson, and I am a third-grade teacher here in Buncombe County. I am a teacher with ADHD and dyslexia. My own experience in education was often not positive, and my needs were not met. I tell you this because I want you to understand my perspective, my intentions while I talk. My primary goal as a teacher is to serve my students, make them feel safe and capable. The requirements of this job obviously cannot be accomplished in contract hours. Everyone knows this. What they don't know is just how many hours. I work 30 hours per week outside of my contract hours, and I'm far from alone on this. I do this because I love my students and I want to be the teacher they deserve. However, the money I make is stretched thin. On top of the teaching job that I hold, I have another job, then a summer job on top of that. I rent a room from my sister's house because the cost of living is so expensive here. The reason I work as many contract hours as I do is because the teacher's plate is constantly being added to while nothing is removed. I have half my class... I have half my class coming in well below grade level, often kindergarten. I do everything I can to meet the students' needs, but I can't by myself, and there's literally not enough time based on our MTSS documents and our time-of-use documents for me to provide these services. I need the help of my assistants, or the assistants at our school. The challenge I face as a teacher is nothing compared to our classified staff. A teacher assistant I work with maintains bus driving, being an assistant for third and fourth grade, plus two outside jobs, which he is paid more for at those jobs than he is at Buncombe County. But he loves working with the kids, and he's great at it. He is not paid a living wage for his work, his vital work. He is constantly pulled away to assist other areas because we lack the support staff that we need. What happens to the students who he is tasked with working with is that they suffer and they lose available one-on-one, small-group time and instruction to help fill those gaps that they already are living with. He doesn't want to be pulled away to drive a bus or cover another class, but it's a necessity because we don't pay support staff enough of a living wage. Then, support staff leaves because they can't afford this job. Then, the people who stay are stretched thinner and thinner until they become burned out and leave. If you decide to pay the very bare minimum, which is not even a living wage, to teachers and support staff who teach, care for, and keep safe and educate our children, then you are failing the children here in Buncombe County. Every day, we educators and support staff, who work with the kids day in and day out, advocate and sacrifice to meet the needs of our students. We do our jobs to the very best of our ability. Now is your time to do yours. It is an imperative that you fiercely advocate to the county that we need increased EC staff positions and pay. We also need increased certified staff pay, and most of all, we greatly need to increase the classified staff pay. They can't live on it. It's not sustainable, and the ones who are going to suffer is the kids. Thank you.
(APPLAUSE).
Good evening, Members of the Board. My name is Raymond Smith. I live in the Robertson District, and I work in both the Irwin and Reynolds Districts as a school counselor for Oakley and Johnston Elementary Schools. I have a master's in education from Western Carolina University and a bachelor's in psychology from UNC Asheville. In addition to be a licensed school counselor, I am also a licensed clinical mental health counseling associate and a nationally certified counselor, both of which I'm not compensated for in any way. And I'm here to speak to you on the need to increase mental health services in our schools. Today, we are dealing with increased rates of mental health diagnoses, trauma, poverty, and media influences, especially those involving social media. These factors and many others coalesce into struggles with emotional regulation, social interactions with peers, and academic success. As a result, schools experience increased behavior referrals for incidents from classroom disruptions and elopements to fights and threats. All of this affects a student's ability to access school, and individual needs lead to evaluations for 504s, IEPs, the development of behavior intervention, crisis, and safety plans, the completion of threat and suicide assessments as well, and referrals for school-based therapy, with many students receiving multiple interventions. School counselors and social workers are thereby stretched thin, and more specialized interventions are needed sooner rather than later. But waitlists are months-long, and behavior specialists are at many of the schools that they support, often not exactly where you need them, when you need them, because they're dealing with something somewhere else. Every week, I work inside two schools, seeing all of this in action firsthand, and I hear from multiple colleagues across the district that they witness this as well. Therefore, this is a district-wide concern and needs to be addressed at the district level. The question is, how can we increase mental health supports in our schools? As a counselor and member of BCIE, I endorse the following recommendations in this area: to increase access to school-based therapists who accept all North Carolina Medicaid plans with a minimum of one full-time therapist per school, and to keep all ESAR-funded positions as well as double behavior support with a goal of getting one full-time behavior specialist per school. I urge the Board to take action to positively address the mental health needs of our students, which in turn would have a positive impact on not only student outcomes, but teacher working conditions and mental health as well. Thank you for your time.
(APPLAUSE).
Good evening. My name is Joan Hoffman, and I have two kids who are awesome that attend Glen Arden Elementary School, and I teach career and technical education at AC Reynolds High School. I'm here tonight to talk about the need to increase access to school-based therapists in our system as the call for mental health support for our students and staff is growing each day. I am the mother of a student who sees a school-based therapist. As a teacher who also works with them, I would like the Board to take direct action to ensure that all students have increased access to a provider who accepts all Medicaid plans and private insurance, with a goal of at least one full-time therapist in every school, so that no child is on a waitlist to receive mental health and behavioral support. I visit many schools as part of my role in our local staff union, and I continue to be surprised at the lack of service providers, private spaces for them to meet with students, and time given. This is so important. My son Jamie began his school journey in preschool at my high school. He had very significant speech issues. As he grew, his difficulty connecting with his teachers and peers worsened. He cried a lot. He found himself having a hard time controlling these big emotions. He began the slow slog of speech therapy in kindergarten, and he was making good progress, but he continued to struggle making friends, feeling lonely and different. Since he began his sessions last year, I have been so thrilled with the progress he has made. The data collected by his team members really shows these successes. Last week, he came home and said he met a new friend today, and he hasn't given me a thumbs down when I ask him how his day was in a really long time. I am so appreciative of his MEHEC therapist, Julia, and all she does for our family. Of course, the devil's in the details, and I consider MEHEC to be the gold standard of what we need at our schools. They take all forms of Medicaid. They take private health insurance. They have a sliding scale for people who do not have insurance. This is essential. They participate in meetings in our school with personnel to assist with behavior plans and IEPs when they're invited, and I get quarterly updates about my son's progress towards his goals. They have been really easy to work with regarding payments, insurance billing, and are very responsive on the phone when I call them. I cannot speak their praises enough. They are responsive to the request to increase staffing as student needs increase. We now have three therapists at Reynolds High School. Every agency that we partner with as a district should be able to do the same for all BCS students, because it's what they need and they deserve. Please consider my plea to increase access to school-based therapists across our entire system, so we will be able to serve each and every student regardless of their ability to pay. Thank you very much.
(APPLAUSE).
I teach at Oakley, and I live in Irwin. Thank you for your time, for this chance to speak. I would like to talk to you tonight about the maximum pressure that we need for you, our elected officials, to apply in your budget requests. We know that 20% of our budget is federal, 60% is state, and you guys aren't in control of only the remaining 20%. But that is 20%, and we need to see the full force of that 20%. We need you to request the most amount of pay raises. We need you to request the highest amount of funding. We need you to request the highest amount of funding for new positions, and we need the maximum amount asked in all areas. The amount that you request will be a reflection of the amount of support that you have for us. Currently, you have recommended $13 million in an increase to the county commissioners. In our work, we have actually found out that we need $54 million to meet our needs. There is a huge gap, and we need that gap to close more. We need you to come out swinging for us. We need to feel that you are fighting for us. We need to know that you are fighting to save public education, and this is not a time for prudence, caution, or hesitancy. We need you in the fight with us to save our schools. Thank you.
(APPLAUSE).
I'm a former Nesbit Discovery Academy student and a DASUla. I'm going to read from the abstract to the study titled "The Double Invisibility of Long COVID in Children." Quote, "The COVID-19 pandemic has been dominated by discussions of mild and short-lasting cases and acutely serious or lethal forms of the disease. Less attention has been paid to long-term COVID-19 symptoms, long COVID, particularly in children. This analysis of the experiences of children and adolescents with long COVID and those of their parents/caregivers argues that children with long COVID encounter a double invisibility due to the condition's limited social currency and their status as the youngest members of our society. The occurrence of long COVID in children challenges key aspects of a dominant pandemic narrative, some of which have persisted from the early stages of the pandemic into 2023. Analysis of our qualitative interviews demonstrates that participant experiences were shaped and undermined by the current convergence of three elements of the dominant pandemic narrative: that COVID-19 is mild and everyone recovers; that children are not badly affected by COVID-19; and that the worst of the pandemic was essentially over as soon as 2021/2022. In the face of these characterizations of COVID-19 experience, young people and their families report significantly additional challenges in making the illness experiences of children and adolescents visible, and thus in gaining appropriate support from medical and educational professionals. Children and adolescents with long COVID struggle to signal the severity of their condition and elicit care in the manner expected of other debilitating illnesses. This was exacerbated by assumptions and stereotypes about unwell children and adolescents and their parents, and questioning their candidacy as reliable, trustworthy patients." End quote. In 2020, our government initially delayed action in preventing the SARS-CoV-2 pandemic from escalating. When they finally shut down our schools in March of 2020, that sudden swiftness saved countless lives. Subsequently, Joe Biden's rapid stripping and removal of health precautions has led to a situation where virtually everyone in the United States has had at least one COVID infection. Right now, we are witnessing a similar lack of action around H5N1, also known as the bird flu. In late January, two ducks that were found dead at Lake Louise in Weaverville were tested positive for avian flu and confirmed that it was already spreading amongst wild birds in our county. That was months ago, and in early April, North Carolina had its first confirmed cases of avian flu amongst our cattle. There is an old saying that our elected officials have seemed to forgotten in the past few years: "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." This Board needs to be monitoring the situation with H5N1 and creating preparations for the possibility of remote learning again, but providing much more support. We should be doing everything we can to...
Thank you. (APPLAUSE).
Superintendent Jackson, Madam Chair, and Honorable Board Members, my name is Sally George. I'm from the Robertson District, and I am the front desk receptionist at Glen Arden. After parking my car each morning, I say a prayer for our staff and students. Those of you here tonight are most likely aware of the basic duties of a school receptionist. I would like to share with you a few of my responsibilities that are outside the box of that official school receptionist's job description. Due to the fact that we are unable to have a nurse on campus daily, I administer prescription medicines to students, contact parents regarding injuries, and log all the paperwork involved in the forms that are required by the district level. Even though I do not have a medical background, I am entrusted with these responsibilities, and I do not receive a stipend for performing nursing duties. Another one of my responsibilities outside the official receptionist's capacity is to ensure that our schools stay safe. I am the first point of contact of visitors to our campus. We share an SO officer with our several other schools, and some days, he is unavailable to come to our school. Therefore, the task of screening people and making important decisions prior to allowing them into our building is something that regularly falls on me. I do not have police academy training, yet this is something I take very seriously. Again, I receive no compensation for this added responsibility. In addition to the eight hours I work at school each day, I've been working another job for nine years so that my cost of living is covered. It means I get up at 5:30, and I don't arrive home some nights until 9:00. That's 9:30, not 9:00 AM. With my second job, I work nearly 60 hours a week. If I were in charge of employees who are tasked with making decisions that have a direct impact on health and safety of our students and our staff, I'd want them to be well-rested and compensated fairly. Our office staff are the face of the schools entrusted by families that we serve. We are the glue that holds these schools together. Before you put that final eke on that budget, I ask that you make this budget reflect that you value what we do every day and that you demonstrate fairness and employee compensation across the Board. I believe in myself, and I believe in the Board. Thank you.
Hello. I think you've seen me before. I'm from Owen High School, and I want to first say how proud I am to be a part of that Owen community that has parents here tonight, several teachers here tonight, and others, people tuning in, how blessed I am to work at that school and that community and with Buncombe County Schools. Thank you very much. There, I do want to share a continuation of what Ms. Hurt, our PTO president, was explaining about the situation of positions at Owen High School, because I think it's relevant to this consideration of our budget and how much we're willing to ask for and what that really means in our buildings. Ms. Hurt was explaining that her son was able to participate in a program for nursing fundamentals and that he has gone on to work within that field, and he credits that experience with his success, and we are happy in that. Her daughter, who wanted to enter the same kind of experience, was unable to do so because we lost our teacher for that course. And at Owen High School, when you lose a teacher because our numbers are this or that, you don't just lose a teacher, you lose a whole program. We're not losing just people in our building. We are losing opportunities for our children. These opportunities are available to other people in Buncombe County, other students in Buncombe County. I may not, at this time, be able to change what the state is going to do to fund us with ADM. I will push them to do better, and I do speak against them as that they have been robbing us of the funding we need. But I am thinking that in Buncombe County at least, we can ensure that our children within Buncombe County have equal opportunities. It is not fair to have a student at Owen High School say, "I'm sorry, we don't have that face-to-face program now, but you can take it online," or maybe you can try to go to this other school across the district, drive across the county, or be here or there. We know that you also want to participate in our theater department, our arts department, our athletics department, but we just don't have that engineering class here anymore. We don't have that nursing class here anymore. I'm so sorry. How do you expect us to keep our children in our building if there are opportunities in other buildings that they can have that would prepare them for the future? Help us meet those strategic goals. Help us meet them. We will help you meet them. We will make Buncombe County Schools look fantastic if you will give us the teachers in our buildings to do so. That's what the funding means, all right? Second thing, I'll try to be quick. I'm here for the classified staff who can't be here because they're working a second or...
Shana Pill.
Good evening, y'all. Shana Pill, Buncombe County School Special Ed teacher and BCAE president. I stand before you tonight representing the voices of public school staff and concerned community members who are deeply invested in the success of our students and the strength of our school system. I'm here tonight to urge you to continue to lift up the children of Buncombe County Schools by supporting the budget request presented by Ms. Thorpe at the last Budget Work session and make critical enhancements to it to ensure the continued growth of our children. First and foremost, I call upon this esteemed board to fulfill the promise made last year regarding the increase in the local supplement for classified staff. These hard-working individuals have yet to receive the additional 2% increase that y'all rightfully pledged to them. It has also raised eyebrows with the county commission. Classified staff members are the backbone of our schools, providing invaluable support and services that are essential to the daily operations and overall success of our schools. Furthermore, I ask you to heed the call outlined in BCAE's petition for increasing EC and behavior support staff. Our students with exceptional needs deserve access to the specialized resources and support necessary to thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. By increasing the number of EC and behavior support staff members, we can better address the unique challenges and requirements of these students, fostering an inclusive learning environment where every individual has the opportunity to reach their full potential. Additionally, it is imperative that all staff positions funded through ESSR funds are retained. These positions play a vital role in addressing the academic and social-emotional needs of our students, particularly as we face more difficult challenges each and every day in this world, as you've heard tonight. I want to tell you what stood out to me at the last Budget Work session. I heard from Madam Chair, "The need is greater than what we've asked for." I heard from Madam Vice Chair, "It's full of non-negotiables." And from Ms. Clemens, "These are such critical needs. We need to ask for more." As Mr. Elliott pointed out, our county commission has prioritized education in their strategic plan. They're part of our team. We have to ask them for more this year, not next year. We can't let the gap of what our students need and what we're able to give them widen. Thank you for your attention and consideration, and I ask you to make a decision with your heart tonight. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to take a 10-minute break.
I'll call us back to order. The first item on the action agenda is the approval of the 2427 strategic plan presented by Dr. Jackson and Dr. Reed. Are there questions from board members concerning this item? Hearing none, I will call, okay, I have to call the roll. Kim Clemens, oh, I have to have a motion and then I can call people's names. All right, could I get a motion, please?
Motion, so moved.
Thank you. Could I get a second? Uh huh. So now I can call the roll. Kim Clemens, are you with us?
Yes, I approve.
Thank you. Peggy Buchanan?
I approve.
Rob Elliott?
Aye.
Thank you. Amanda Simpkins?
Aye.
Judy Lewis?
Aye.
And Anne Franklin. So we're all in support, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of funding requests for current expenses and capital approbriation and submission of the 2425 preliminary budget to the county commissioners, and that's Ms. Thorpe who's in the building. Could I get a motion to approve?
I'm so moved.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
All right, Kim Clemens?
Can I ask for discussion?
Wait just a minute, Kim. I think we're gonna have a little discussion.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I was wanting to do. Thank you.
Uh huh.
Since it's been seconded. I just, you know, I appreciate all the work of the staff on pulling this budget together. I recognize, number one, as we've heard tonight, you know, a lot of the heartburn that we experience is, starts with state funding, and then it comes down to local level, and it's up to us to identify the needs of our school system to present for local supplement, which I want to also say loud and clear to the county commissioners, who may or may not be watching this tonight, that we certainly appreciate the level of supplemental funding that they provide every year. It is, we are unique in the state. We are not the rule, we are the exception. And that comes at a cost to the whole county, it comes at a cost to taxpayers. And so, it is, it's a community effort to supplement our educator wages and provide all the other services that we have. I just, you know, the table that we provided in this budget for approval, you know, calls out, you know, the budget increases that we're asking for. And Tina, if you don't mind, you know, something that is so important that we've mentioned already is the multilingual learner services and supports, and then this request to increase EC assistant hours from seven hours to eight hours, and a request for additional APs, counselors, and social worker positions, you know, all total, that's, you know, three, four million dollars worth of this request. From the perspective, I'm trying to think about numbers of staff here, but also, you know, what it means to them from a salary increase perspective. The one that sticks out to me is, is the request to increase EC assistant hours from seven to eight a day. And if, I just want to confirm my math as I'm thinking about that. The impact to an EC assistant's paycheck would be roughly an increase of like thirteen percent from current?
So currently, on average, an EC assistant makes twenty dollars and sixty-five cents an hour. Working seven hours at, usually they work twenty-one point six seven hours a month, that would be three thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars a month. If you increase that, that's gonna be, in a year, that's going to go up four thousand, right at forty-five hundred dollars per person as a salary increase, which is fourteen point two eight percent increase on average for EC assistants to change their hours from seven to eight.
Okay. Got it. And then, in the multilingual learner services and supports, do, I probably should know this number, but the number of staff that that's gonna increase in our schools for multilingual learners, how many additional staff is that gonna pay for?
It's gonna be twelve additional teachers.
Okay. And then again, on the counselors and social worker positions, is there an estimated number for those increased positions?
Yes. In addition, there's three and a half more counselors, and there's also seven point two social workers that is in this increase for the ask.
Um, yeah, so, you know, I certainly hear the BCAE very loud and clear. I certainly respect, you know, you have correctly identified the need, right? And that means a lot to have that communicated to us. I do also know that there is a lot in this budget that speaks to the needs that you presented. Maybe not in a direct, bulleted manner that's super easy to follow, but, you know, I made a motion to approve this budget tonight because I do believe that there are mechanisms in this budget as we present it that do address a good number of those concerns. It doesn't solve a hundred percent of them. And later, when we talk about our legislative agenda, I think you'll hear that we're actively gonna be advocating to the North County General Assembly and others to help solve some of those other pieces. And that we are in it with you guys, from that perspective. But yeah, thank you, Tina. I just, I wanted to make sure I understood the magnitude of what some of these numbers meant, when it comes down to the numbers of staff and actually the impacts to salaries that we'll see.
Well, I'd like to, once again, thank the county commissioners for going above and beyond last year. I'd like to clarify that what they approved was for phase two and three to be completed for classified staff, which was an average of seventeen point four three percent increase for classified staff last year. That was given to them on July the first of twenty-three. And then Brownie Newman, Chairman Newman, also said in October that while he was addressing the classified issue, he wanted to also offer two percent to the certified staff. And we did meet all those requests. That was approved by the county commissioners.
And to be clear, Tina, when you, the two percent from Brownie, that was, that's where that two percent increase in the supplement came into play, and that's why that was for the certified staff, was because that was directly a target for Brownie to do, to compensate certified staff as well, because our biggest push was for our classified staff.
That is a very correct statement, and that's exactly how he presented it last October, was he was definitely recognizing the need for classified, but he also wanted to do something for the certified. So I want to commend them once again for going above and beyond in Buckham County to meet the needs as much as they can with a very, with their budget as well. There's so many budgetary items that you have to work through, and I just appreciate that.
Yeah, and my last comment around all that is too, is I do appreciate Superintendent bringing us this budget, is it, and as we present it to the commissioners, is that I do, when I've reviewed the Buckham County strategic plan, you know, this budget, you know, is asking for support for Buckham County schools to help the county, you know, address the key concerns in their strategic plan. And I feel like, you know, we are moving the needle on that for them in a very successful way. I think we'll continue to do so, but thanks for clarifying that.
You're welcome. Any more questions?
I just want to reiterate the fact that when the commissioners gave us this money, that we implemented the pay from that money on July one of this year.
We retroed back because we had to wait on a state budget to clear. Then we met in October, the state budget cleared October third, I believe, and then we met the following week with the county commissioners once again, because they wanted to see what the state budget did. Then we retroed everyone's pay back to July first for all of that.
And our certified and classified people have been benefiting from that increase since July one.
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay, discussion over. Now, Ms. Clemens, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. And my friend, Mr. Elliott told a lot of what I was gonna say, but I do want to reiterate a couple of things, and that is, and I said this in the work session, and I mean this with all my heart, and I do appreciate Dr. Jackson and Tina for listening to feedback that I had been sharing with them for the year and a half that I've been on the school board. And that is, we desperately need more counselors, we need more social workers, we need more EC teachers and staff, and we need multilingual teachers. The other piece, you know, and I'm not gonna rank them in any certain order because they're all a priority to me. For our children, it's for our kids. And there's some places where I think we could use another half or part-time AP because of things going on with that individual school. So I want people to know, I know we need more. I know we need more. And I wish I could say that the county's gonna give us a lot more money. We are asking for thirteen million, almost fourteen million more than what we received last year. And what I would love for us to be able to do is, is to say, we'll go in and ask for double. But in all honesty, there's only so much money the county has. And I have a good relationship with several of them, Rob Elliott does, we talk to him all the time about what our needs are for kids and for teachers. I think we just have to be realistic. I think, you know, the bond, we could do a bond referendum down the road. We, you know, when you look at property taxes, you talk to people about increasing property tax. Well, I gotta tell you, I pay city and county both, and it's extremely high every year. So, I mean, there's a give and take in all this. I know we need more staff. If I could wave a wand, I would give it to us in every single school, because I think we need additional staff in every single school. I think this is where we are today. I don't like it, but I think that we're being reasonable and that the county commissioners understand our needs. And Dr. Jackson and Tina, Ms. Thorpe will explain all of that to them so that we can get thirteen million dollars more than we have in the last year. I could talk about it all night, Madam Chair, but I will, I will stop talking now.
Thank you, Ms. Clemens. All right, I've got a motion and a second. I'm gonna do the vote. Ms. Clemens, do you support it, the motion? Did you hang up?
I'm sorry, I hit, I'm sorry, hit the wrong button. Aye, approve.
Thank you. Peggy Buchanan?
I approve.
Uh huh. Rob Elliott?
Aye.
Amanda Simpkins?
Aye.
Judy Lewis?
Aye.
Anne Franklin. All those, it passes. All right, the approval of the lottery funding for continuation of a security hardware uplift for North Buckham High School tennis courts. That's also Ms. Thorpe and Mr. Wyatt. Are there questions from the board members concerning this item? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. I guess I could second that, since it's North Buckham. Is there question or comment from the board? Hearing none, Ms. Clemens?
Aye.
Are you in favor?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes ma'am, aye approve.
Thank you. Peggy Buchanan?
I approve.
Uh huh. Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Amanda Simpkins?
Aye.
Uh huh. Judy Lewis?
Yes.
Anne Franklin. All of motion, passes. Okay. Next items, AB Technical Community College lease agreement and addendum. This is also Ms. Thorpe, don't you go anywhere. Okay. I need a motion to approve this amendment.
So approve.
Thank you. That's by Judy Lewis, and could I get a second?
Kim.
Kim Clemens, thank you. Now, comments or questions about this?
I'm just curious if anything, if this is just essentially a renewal, or if there were any big changes to the previous lease?
Yes. This amendment takes into account that AB Tech has agreed to give us additional space to expand the program for BCCI and the early college there. And so, we are renovating, using capital funds to renovate and get those classrooms ready. And Mr. Clark and White and Robert Frisbee have been out there looking at what it takes to make this happen. And AB Tech Board is in favor of this, so we will be sending this amendment over tomorrow to them as well.
Thank you.
And as I understand, if I can comment, the quicker we can get this done, the quicker construction can begin on what we need to have happen to absorb this new program at AB Tech. All right, Kim Clemens?
Aye, approve.
Thank you. Peggy Buchanan?
I approve.
Rob Elliott?
Aye.
Amanda Simpkins?
Aye.
And Judy Lewis?
I approve.
And Franklin, I certainly approve of all the work that's been going on over there. Buckham County School Board of Education legislative agenda, I will ask Dr. Jackson to discuss this.
Thank you, board members. This evening, I have before you the Buckham County Schools Board of Education two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five legislative agenda. Madam Chair, with your permission, I'll read the agenda.
Sure.
Thank you. Buckham County Schools serves approximately twenty-two thousand students in western North Carolina. Our priority is that all students will graduate as high-achieving and globally competitive learners. To assist in this work, the Buckham County Schools Board of Education advocates for the following legislative actions. In the area of prioritizing student safety and well-being, amend the Parents' Bill of Rights legislation to allow suicide risk assessments to be administered by schools when parents are not available, to provide prior consent so long as notice and results are provided to parents following the assessment. To provide mental health personnel at nationally recommended ratios, school social workers, one to two hundred fifty, school psychologists, one to five hundred, school counselors, one to two hundred fifty, school nurses, one to seven hundred fifty or one per school. To provide a school resource officer for every school. To expand school safety grants. To fully fund the Leandro decision. To oppose legislation that requires Buckham County Schools and all PSUs or LEAs additional requirements and mandates but does not provide new revenues to fund said programs. To approve HB nine fourteen to reimburse Buckham County Schools the exact cost of redistricting the Board of Education electoral districts as required by state legislation. To increase funding and assistance to local communities and refugee resettlement organizations to address the needs of new arrivals. In the area of recruit, retain, and reward talented personnel. To provide a substantial increase in state-funded base pay for teachers and administrators to reach the national average, helping attract and retain teachers and address teacher shortages. To increase allotments to support fair and competitive wages for classified staff, including teacher assistants, custodians, treasurers, bus drivers, school nutrition staff, administrative staff, et cetera, helping attract and retain essential staff and address staff shortages. To provide funding for recruitment and retention bonuses for teachers and staff, especially for hard-to-fill positions. To reinstate advanced degree pay for teachers. To restore longevity pay for teachers. To restore full retirement benefits to all employees hired since January first, two thousand twenty-one. To fund full-time permanent substitute teachers. To fully fund the North Carolina Teaching Fellows Program. In the area of accelerate learning. To allow local school boards to align school calendars with the Community College calendar. To provide additional financial support for children with disabilities. To provide additional financial support for academically-intellectually gifted students. To provide no-cost meals for all students. To increase the number of pre-K seats available and to revise school performance grades to change to weight growth heavier.
Thank you. Do we need to acknowledge this? I mean, we've written it.
I think it would be appropriate for the board to approve it by vote, yes.
Okay. Do I have to have a motion?
You did. Motion to approve the legislative agenda.
I'm sorry. Kim, talk. The attorney was talking.
She was saying she couldn't hear what he said.
Oh, well, what he said was that I needed to get a motion to approve. Would you like to do that?
Um, can we, we need the motion before I can make a comment, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay. Well, I'll make the motion. We approve this.
Second.
Okay, and Amanda's seconding. Now, we can have discussion.
Okay. Well, I think this is, goes along with basically what I was saying five minutes ago. We know what the needs are, and we're asking for those needs. And I'm not gonna tell people how to vote, but you really have to look at what the needs are in public education. And remember that, and talk to people that you know about that, because we do have good relationships with folks that represent us in Raleigh, and they are all for helping support more funding for public education. But we need to be out talking to our friends and neighbors and everyone else about, if we wanna get this legislative agenda passed, we gotta get people to the polls and vote, because this is what it's gonna take for us to get what is needed for our kids, all kids, and all of our teachers and staff in Buckham County Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Clemens. Thank you, Ms. Plemmons. Any other comments from the board? Then I'll call the roll. That would be Kim Plemmons?
I approve.
Peggy Buchanan?
I approve.
Rob Elliott?
Aye.
Amanda Simpkins?
Aye.
Judy Lewis?
Aye.
Anne Franklin? Motion passes, correct? Okay. Now we need to talk about the resolution of Buckham County Board of Education approving conveyance to certain real property. And I, at North Buckham Middle School and at TC Robertson. Do we have any questions about this conveyance?
Just for the benefit of the public, just to clarify what this is about, because my first time in this role, this was new for me. I don't know if there's.
Who do we pose that, this would be Tina Thorpe and our attorney.
Just to confirm that in the notion of.
Being a good neighbor?
Yeah. That, when we undergo construction renovation projects that are major, and we're going through the School Capital Fund Commission, this is more or less a requirement, right, that we are basically conveying the deed to these properties, to the county, as collateral, more or less, for the capital to handle renovations? Is that the right way to put it?
Well, they don't always have to go out for collateral. What happens is, if the county decides, with the number of requests that we had and how much their funding, they went for a bond. And on that bond, the bond holder is requiring collateral. And so, these two are the two biggest ones that we are doing in our project list, so they will hold that for collateral until the bond is paid off. And then it's, an update to the deed is done, and then it's issued back to Buckham County Schools.
Got it, thanks.
Okay, that being said, could I get a motion to approve?
I move.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Okay, Kim Plemmons?
I approve.
Peggy Buchanan?
I approve.
Rob Elliott?
Aye.
Amanda Simpkins?
Aye.
Judy Lewis?
Aye.
Anne Franklin. Next item on the agenda is the multi-district level lawsuit against social media company, companies, and I believe our attorney is going to speak to that.
So, Madam Chair and board members, good evening. This evening, this is a discussion item, not necessarily an action item for this evening. I think the board wanted to hear about this in public session and give some time for some potential public input. So what you have before you this evening is the possibility to join legal action regarding social media addiction in a multi-district lawsuit. These are lawsuits that are primarily targeted at the Big Ten social media companies, Meta, TikTok, and Snapchat, and the allegations that are being brought in the lawsuits basically sound in both negligence and in public nuisance. The allegations are that the basis of liability against these social media companies is through targeted algorithms, through endless scrolling possibilities, inadequate age verifications, insufficient parental controls, and constant notifications, that they have set up a network that has basically targeted youth in our nation, and that some of the harms that have been created are absenteeism, substance abuse, behavioral issues, and mental health issues. And that front line, that school districts being the front line, and especially public school districts being the front line of this mental health crisis that's well-recognized now in our nation, that this is costing additional manpower hours, obviously difficulties with educating students, additional costs, additional expenses. So a law firm in California, Levine, Papantonio, and Rafferty filed a multi-jurisdictional lawsuit in California in federal district court. There was a motion to dismiss that lawsuit, and that motion was denied. So the federal court in California has allowed that suit to go forward. So now, this law firm, through its North Carolina Associated Counsel, a gentleman by the name of Gary Whitaker, who practices out of Winston-Salem, is approaching school boards across North Carolina to see if he would like to join in the litigation. So the litigation would be a classic plaintiff-type litigation, where there would be no financial obligation by the school board, any expenses incurred would be paid out of any potential recovery. But the lawsuit really has two components to it. One, of course, is monetary, that additional resources could come to the school district to help to pay for services and offset some of the impacts from the social media addiction. And then the second component is obviously trying to change the behavior of these social media companies, that I think, again, it is well-recognized the adverse impacts that social media has had on youth, and there's a hope that through these lawsuits, there could be a change in policy approach, behavior, a change in market strategy, frankly, by these social media companies. So this has multifaceted approaches to it in that respect. So you are being asked if you would like to consider joining. This is not an endorsement by our law firm, we're not involved at all, I'm just bringing you this information if it's something that you want to consider joining. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and I think it was also the desire of this board for this to be a very public discussion, so that if members of the community had feelings about this board joining a lawsuit about social media addiction, they would have an opportunity to contact you between now and your next board meeting.
Thank you. We did have a representative from that.
I believe Mr. Gary Whitaker himself came and spoke to you.
Yes, he did.
In a work session.
He did. And we received his information, and at this point, I would entertain any comment or from board members here on this item.
Yeah, I really appreciate this from many levels, but I do think, just from my board action perspective, I do think it would be prudent to hear from the community about this, so I don't think a motion is needed, but I would just like to request that somehow we provide some kind of public format, either a special public comments section, you know, here about this, or, you know, during the redistricting process, we put a few online opportunities out there for people to weigh in, and actually did some community visits. So I'm not sure what that looks like, but I'd just like to request that we do get that public input, because it is, you know, our board joining. And have we ever, has the Buckham County School Board ever joined a multi-jurisdictional lawsuit like this before?
There have been rare occasions where the board has been a plaintiff, directed at construction issues and other things, but I can't think of an example other than the fact that this board and the other urban larger boards in North Carolina were parties to the Leandro lawsuit early on. So yes, and that was, again, the reason that this board and the other boards joined that lawsuit was tried to affect positive change in funding at the time. So there is a precedent for this, yes.
From our historic participation in Leandro. And then, there was a Juul vaping case too, correct?
There was, and some of the districts in North Carolina joined and actually did receive monetary payouts from that. But I don't, this board didn't.
We did not, okay.
We did not join it.
So there is a precedent for our board particularly, in our community, to join this type of lawsuit.
So at this juncture, could, would it be acceptable to you that I ask for our administration to determine an appropriate way to hear from the public regarding this?
Yeah, I think so.
Uh huh, perhaps, well, we'll leave it up to them to come up with an appropriate way to have that happen, okay? Any other questions? This is a real interesting concept from a teacher perspective, and things that are happening in our classroom that are affected by social media. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The minutes of April eleventh, regular meeting, open session, minutes April eleven, closed, special called work session, the personnel report, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget amendment number five, the approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four enrollment and facilities needs report, and the policies for second reading, policy fifty oh one, advisory councils to the board, and policy seventy-five twenty, family and medical leave. Could I get a motion to approve this consent agenda, please? Thank you, I heard a motion and a second. Roll call is Kim Plemmons?
I approve.
Peggy Buchanan?
I approve.
Uh huh, Rob Elliott?
Aye.
Amanda Simpkins?
Aye.
Judy Lewis?
Yes.
Anne Franklin. The next, we have an information agenda that has our financial reports in it. Our next meeting will be June the sixth, with work session and updates for closed session beginning at four here in the executive conference room, and open session beginning at five thirty here in the auditorium. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Uh huh, now then, Peggy, Kim Plemmons?
I approve, yes.
Peggy Buchanan?
I approve.
Rob Elliott?
Aye.
Amanda Simpkins?
Aye.
Judy Lewis?
Aye.
Anne Franklin, we're adjourned.